All right. So let's call the meeting of the November fourth. Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals. John, will you call the role, please?
Chairperson Lyman.
Here.
Commissioner Benazeyak.
Here.
Commissioner Billingsley is absent. Commissioner Slattery.
Here.
Commissioner Henkin is absent. Commissioner Casper.
Present.
Commissioner Tarazas.
Here.
You have five members present. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Commissioner Tarazas, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sure. My beloved citizens, to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, into this world with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, public comment, I was going to remind our audience of our new rules of operation, but having seen no one present here, we'll just move on to approval of the draft October seventh, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes. Is there, are there any additions or corrections? Hang on, was there a motion to approve?
So move.
Slattery move second.
Second.
Mr. All those are favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, pass, Lyman's. I'm going to public hearing for zoning case PC twenty-five twelve. I propose text amendment to define land use category of a tattoo slash piercing studio and add it to the list of special uses in the RB one central business district, as well as to define the land use category of specialized instructional services and add it to the list of permitted uses in the B one central business district. Is there a motion to go into public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I opposed abstentions. John, can you give us some background after I swear in the oath? You raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so this is a zoning text amendment that is proposed by staff and it's broken up into two parts really, two different categories, both dealing with the B one central business district and the uses that are permitted within that district. Um, I think first what I'm going to start with, I think is a little bit uh the easier of the two. Um, that is with this proposed category known as specialized instructional services, which is essentially um just a term to use for any establishment where you are essentially, um, you're going there and you are learning like a skill. And so oftentimes we like yoga is not something we think of, but that is a specialty instructional service. You're learning how to do various techniques of yoga, cooking um class, various trades, uh diet centers, so how to um various ways for nutrition, weight loss, um martial arts tutoring. So these types of uses all fall within this land use category of specialized instructional services. The way our zoning code is written is we actually have very specific uses that are called out such as martial arts studios, uh dance and music studios, but it makes no mention of these other things like cooking, yoga, arts, uh tutoring or any type similar uses. So in more modern day zoning codes, there is more of this broad category for instructional um services because you can't nearly, you can't anticipate what a specific type of use would be like Pilates comes to mind. That is something that is popular now, may not have been thirty years ago. Um, so it's not necessarily in the zoning code. Uh, so staff has had an interest from various businesses that are in these types of instructional services, uh specifically like yoga studios, cooking classes. Those are not right now listed as a permitted use within that zoning district. So staff is proposing to create a category for specialized instructional services. And then this would be permitted by right within um the B one district. So before I get on to the next category, I'll stop to see if there's any questions or comments.
Where's the B one district again?
The B one is the downtown district. So it's essentially from Route fifty-nine, Nellner Boulevard, going down Main Street and then encompassing uh the core of the downtown, which is Main Street between Center Street, Washington, and then down a little ways on Washington, all the way to the train track. So it's that kind of commercial part of downtown.
So is this a separate code designation versus the other one we're going to talk about? Or does it all fall under one category in the code?
Uh, so the, both what we're talking about are uses that would be in the B one district. So specialized instructional services would uh, w- we're proposing that that be a permitted use uh in the B one because it's similar to other uses that are are permitted. So the next one, tattoo parlor, body piercing studio, that is also proposed uh within the B one district, but staff is recommending that that be established as a special use permit rather than permitted by right.
Oh, okay. So now I get it. The other ones would be permitted by right because that's what the category, so a yoga studio and a cooking school would be permitted by right. But a tattoo parlor is standalone is a special use to be granted upon an application by petition.
Right. So that's a total separate land use category.
Okay.
So do we vote on their, on these independently?
You don't have to. The way it's written is for one vote to uh make a recommendation, but you you can certainly split them up to do. I just, they're, they're very different categories. So I didn't want to just uh kind of gloss over either one of them. I wanted, I guess, talk about them individually.
Does yoga fall under fitness anyway?
It's, uh, I mean, it could be, but it is more the way that yoga is, it's taught skill or technique. So it's instructional.
But we have a Taekwondo studio downtown, right?
So that's a lot because we have a martial arts uh uh category that is permitted. So like, like I said, we have very specific uses that are called out, but then um silent on other uses.
So do you need to include martial arts here since you have it in another?
Oh, we do. Yeah. So it's in the definition.
Oh, do, why do we need it here if it's, it's already called out?
Just for consistency's sake of having martial arts being the same as yoga, music, dance, that it's all an instructional type use.
So are you removing it from its others?
Right. It would, yeah. So it would be redundant then to have it twice. So it would be removed.
So I have a question. Are you, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Are you?
So are you calling out where we're removing it?
It would be have to, so it would have to be removed from that list of permitted uses.
So do we want to cover that?
Yeah.
Today too?
Right, right. So I mean, you could, you could remove that because you're now including it in this new category. So still stay in there or just be a matter of removing it as a specific type use.
You, you, you finished?
Yeah.
Okay. So I have a question, a dilemma. So many beauty parlors are doing microblading of eyebrows and they do tattooing of eyelids. So if a beauty parlor, a salon, I should say, ultra body parlor, if a salon wanted to add that service to their list of services, they would have to come back and get a special use permit to do that within their salon?
Or what could be done is we could, not necessarily tonight's meeting, but we could amend the um beauty parlor definition to include microblading and permanent makeup.
Okay, okay. So that would probably be the better solution to that. I just didn't want to make sure that they didn't have to come back through a special process.
I, I would say then that that should be like an, because that would be more accessory to what the, the overall use of that is.
Yeah.
Um, but that would be, that would be whatever we recommend.
Can we make a note to do that then if we pass that?
Another meeting. I assume you'd want to come up with language for that and so on, I would, I would guess, right?
Yeah, yeah, we would. We would alter the um or amend the definition of a, of a beauty salon to include that.
Okay, that'd be great.
And where, where does beauty salon fit right now? Is it a?
It's a permitted use, yeah.
Will this be for all tattoo shops? Does special permit use or would it be just for like a specific business?
So any any tattoo parlor or body piercing studio that's looking to locate in the downtown would be required to obtain a special use permit. So it'd always be on a case by case basis.
Is there a definition for tattoo parlor that has to be put in? I mean, I, well, when you say, are they all the same? I, I.
So we have, are proposing the definition of an establishment offering permanent marking of the skin using ink or other substances by means of needles or other instruments, including microblading, or this is to cover body piercing studio, creation of an opening in the body for the purpose of inserting jewelry or other decoration.
Sorry, I glossed past that down to the amended.
Oh.
I tried to understand. So, okay.
Okay. And do we need to add anything that they be certified by the Department of Health?
So they have to anyway. Um.
Do we check on that though, to make sure that they have that certification?
It is not something that like the community development would enforce. They, so it is a state, there's a state agency that would uh have jurisdiction over that. So it is, it's a state requirement that they do it. We could do it just to reiterate it, but even if it's not listed as a requirement, it is still something that has to be, has to be done.
I wouldn't touch that. That's a renewable license. I don't think we want to involve ourselves in that.
Well, I just want to make sure they're licensed.
Yeah, but the licenses have to be renewed on an annual or biannual basis. I don't think you want to touch that. Let IDPFR take care of that.
Oh, I agree. I just want to make sure we don't say anything in our ordinance that they have to be. Um, we, they have.
What I'm saying is saying we should not put anything.
Oh, why not?
That's because of what I just said. That licensing is taken care of by the state. I don't think that's relevant to what we're saying for the use of the property. That's handled completely separately through Department of Professional Regulation.
Yeah, what, what I will say is.
We don't, if, if someone wants to open a doctor's office, we don't check that they have a doctor's license. You know, it's the same thing. It's a license that's handled by the state. It's not relevant to how I want to use the property. That's independent.
Okay. Okay, you feel strongly, I see.
I do, I do, I.
No, that's fine. That's okay. It was a question I just wanted to ask.
Well, the city has, we don't have a business license. We have a business registration. Um, I mean, there are a host of licenses that are required through the state that um we don't, we don't list them all out in the zoning code that they have to have because they have to have them regardless if we say they have to have them because there's, there's a state law that says that they would have to have them.
Right. It's a, they have to register with the state that they're a tattoo parlor.
They would have to. The state would shut them down for the Houghton County Health Department.
I would shut them down. Okay.
And you could add in here, I suppose, a licensed, a, a state licensed establishment offering, you know.
Uh, again, I wouldn't touch that. There's so many other uh professions that are licensed. You're gonna have to go through and put those all in, starting with the cosmetologists. So if you don't want to have to go through and check licenses on all the different professional regulations, I wouldn't touch it. It's, it's not relevant. It's irrelevant to, to how I'm going to use it. Otherwise, you're gonna have to go through the sixty other professions that are licensed in there and check them all.
I guess I don't mind doing that because I think if we want to make sure that they're a safe environment, to say that it's a licensed business, I don't have a, I don't have a problem with that. You know, just for the health, health and welfare of the community, I don't have a problem with it. If we just say it's licensed, we don't, they come in with a license, they can do it. But um it's not a cross I'm willing to die on, you know? It's a concern I have, but that's fine. Yeah. Any other thoughts? Any other questions?
Well, what if we don't want this tattoo parlor at all? Not included. So do you want to split this and, and address these independently?
Yeah, I think so. I think the specialized instruction things. Fine, but tattoo parlor seems like a certain issue, so.
Why, um, what do you think the comments against it would be? What would you suggest the comments to vote no would be on a tattoo parlor?
Well, I mean, I think there would be, um, I don't think it's a walk in business like it was told it or it generates industrial travel. I think there should be handle a bitch thing. So I don't think it needs to be an essential business such important. It's my thoughts.
Has there been a request for a time that, that came up?
Yes.
Okay. So that definitely makes it more immediate than just theoretical.
Yeah, so um there's actually a local business owner who um is involved with uh, is it the history of tattoo parlors that did um approach to the city council recently about an interest to amend the code that, so he's actually operating in a art studio now in the downtown. Which uh could then be uh used also the tattoo studio as well.
Where's it located? Anglinas Street? Anglinas Street?
Yes.
It's not Main Street, it is Anglinas Street.
Yeah, I would say to me, the tattoo parlor is the equivalent of uh any number of other, you know, any other businesses that I would not personally use or whatever the case might be, but I don't, I don't. I would not presume that I would be the person who would keep that business in around. So I would say I, I would not be comfortable with. I would vote that should be allowed, especially it's personally.
Well, where is the B three distance that is currently allowed?
The B three district is located primarily at North Avenue, the Nellner Boulevard. Um, that is the only location it is admitted and it's there, there's really not a lot of areas for it to be located. Essentially tattoo parlors are, the way our code is written, almost prohibits them. Uh, there's just, there's not available space for one to go into, which is problematic for us to essentially use zoning to prohibit um a use, just because we're discriminating against that, that specific use. But uh that is the only location generally where one could be located at.
Where's the shops up there? I mean, the all four corners, right? Mosaic Crossing.
Right. So in the B three, there are uh distance requirements from certain uses, so from residential daycares, um which staff is not proposing within that's because a downtown has a variety of uses that if we were to start putting separation requirements, it, we would do the same thing. We would essentially zone out a, a use and leave it prohibited.
When we, um, yeah, I mean, I, I guess it's nothing I would use. My daughter-in-law though is fully tattooed, sleeves and legs and hopefully she would walk downtown. I don't know, but it's um not something that I can see. I see your point, but I see no reason that we should um censor a business from downtown. So I guess I agree with you that because we don't use it doesn't mean we shouldn't allow it to be downtown if that's seen as a way to attract business to our downtown district. Any other thoughts?
You want to split it? Talk about them separately or?
Oh, I mean, are they, are they?
Right now, they're in one.
They're together.
They're together.
Let's split it. Let's split it. We'll do two motions. One motion will be for the
Specialized Instructional Services.
Specialized Instructional Services. And then the second motion can be for the um land use category of piercing and studios and adds it as to special use in the B one, right?
Correct.
Are there any other questions? Because remember, all questions have to be asked during the public hearing. When we come out of public hearing, we can talk about how to handle the motions more.
So just uh one question on the instructional services, John, we go to and similar uses. How does that, how does that work when somebody comes in with ones that's not specifically listed here and they're saying it's part of this? Is that something that's easy to deal with or?
So it, it gives the the ability for something that's, that's not specifically listed in here, but maybe it's compatible with that. The zoning administrator is like the final call on it. So if somebody comes in and says, I have PBC operation that I think is this, the zoning administrator may disagree with that and say, no, I don't believe that's a similar use to what this is saying. If there's a disagreement, it would then correct. It would come here um as a, an appeal between the two.
All right. So there's a way for it to be handled.
Yeah.
It's not explicitly.
Yes.
Okay.
All questions asked?
Asked and answered.
Okay, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second. Thank you. All right, moving on in the agenda to um discuss and make a motion regarding.
But close.
Oh, yes, that would be a good idea. Um, motion to close the public hearing. We just, we did, did that. And we have to vote. All those in favor signify everything. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries.
He barb does this without the crib notes that John gives you. It's like a foul, oh, I gotta close, you know. She, she just does this because she knows what she's doing.
She wants to make you feel better, Dave.
Yeah. See what she's doing there and.
I had already moved on, you guys. All right. So we're going to do two motions. Is that the consensus of the group?
Yes.
All right. So entertain a motion that defines land use, a, a land use category of specialized instructional service to be added to the list of permitted use in the B one central business district. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those, uh, do you want to call the roll turn?
Commissioner Benazeyak?
Aye.
Commissioner Casper?
Aye.
Commissioner Slattery?
Aye.
Commissioner Tarazas?
Aye.
Chairperson Lyman's.
Aye.
Aye, yes, zero, no, that motion carries.
We'll entertain a second motion. Is there any further discussion on um tattoo parlors? And then entertain a motion that defines the land use category of tattoo piercing studio and adds it to the list of special uses for the B one central business district. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. John, call the role, please.
Commissioner Tarazas?
Aye.
Commissioner Benazeyak?
Aye.
Commissioner Slattery?
No.
Commissioner Casper?
Aye.
Chairperson Lyman's.
Aye. Thank you for voting no.
Or yes one.
It's always good to have, show that there was discussion. All right. And then you'll make a note to change the beauty parlor thing.
Yes, so we can bring that. I think what we can do is we're expecting more zoning tax amendments, so we can tag that on to.
Yes. So you said tattoo, you, you meant they, they put permanent eyeliner on.
Right, and it's a tattoo, yeah.
But you meant they were putting like designs on the eyelids. I'm like, I haven't seen this.
God knows. I don't, I'm not on, on TikTok, but I'm sure it's been done.
I've seen it. It's, it's a little discomforting because when someone, you don't see it until they do this.
Oh, really? They've got flowers or something?
Something. I don't remember what it was, but.
Yeah, why not, I guess, right?
I've only seen.
If you're not expecting it, you, you, until the person blinks, then it's like, oh.
If you're, if you're on that ilk and you're going to go that way, why not, right? So.
Yeah, yeah. Don't, don't tell my daughter-in-law. That's the one part that's probably not tattooed.
I have a phobia with uh needles.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you know what? Some services down there, especially the instructional piece in the, in the central business district, uh, you know, a yoga studio, the tattoo parlor, whatever, where you know, a reason for people to be down there, then that leads to, you know, a restaurant, they're doing more business and therefore, you know, I mean, that's kind of the beginning of how you.
Yeah, the right way. But I also seen like parts of the state or cities, some cities, you have a two parlor, you have a liquor store, and then you have uh like a random gaming stuff.
Yeah.
That's when you can get like people that just want to kind of hang around and.
They're not spending money. They're just.
Right, right. So, so hopefully it's a two parlor, you know, brings downtown business, but, but does it the right way with.
But tattooing is pretty kind of an art form, right?
Yeah.
It's not the old designation.
Right.
It's a bunch of bums who get tattoos, you know?
No.
So it does, it does have an art.
Right.
Uh, art to it, but we don't need, we don't want it to lead to pawn shops, shops of liquor stores.
Yeah, because even some else, they're, they're like the fancy ones with, they reuse a hot, like, you know, liquor in there and you can do your nails. So I feel like this could be one of those things where like it's a nice little high end tattoo parlor or some art.
All right. Other business, John?
So I have included in your packet the meeting schedule for twenty twenty-six. Um, and as you see, we only have one meeting each month. So last meeting, we did away with the second uh meeting of the month.
I've gone away for one month and you took away our possible second meeting? Wow.
Well, she can afford to travel.
Yeah. I'm going to go for you.
No, so it's, it's just kind of respecting everyone's ability to, to vote. We may have some uh people absent um on election night as serving as voting judges or what the case may be. So also too, not just the uh commissioners, uh you're respecting their ability to vote, but also the public too. So um if there's a, a matter that's coming before the commission and people are coming here instead and not being able to vote because they're making accommodations. So it's, it's really just to kind of stick to that.
Is there no December meeting?
Uh, we do, we do have a December meeting. Uh, so you mean this, December?
I don't see it on this list here of upcoming, and I, I realize this is twenty twenty-six, but.
Oh, December first, twenty twenty-six. It's on the very bottom.
No, I meant for.
Next month.
Going to be in, um, uh, twenty, December twenty, twenty-five.
Oh.
I was just asking.
Yeah, it's.
Well, because that's already on the twenty-five agenda. It's already set for all the dates.
Yeah. So you would hope, but we're going to be here.
I will not be anyway, but I was.
Oh.
Whether I would have to tell John I'm going to be here or not.
John is, he's not here.
I appreciate when you tell me your travel schedule.
Okay, so do we need to adopt this? We can.
Yep, you can just, uh, i- if there's no objection to it, then um we don't have to.
Is there any objection? Does it any, fall on anybody's birthday? Do we have to bring cake? Oh, actually it does fall on my birthday.
So we have to guess which one it is.
Yeah.
You don't have to tell us.
Well, if I shop with cake, you'll know what day it is. Okay. Um, anything else? Any updates on petitions? What we're going to talk about in December or whatever?
Yeah, so uh, one thing I will mention is you may have heard this if you're following along with social media or just city council or just the happenings in the city, but there is a new commission that's going to be, it's called the Downtown Revitalization Commission uh that has been put together and it's got various um, various individuals throughout the community, being in the, the business community, nonprofits, residents, um, some uh aldermen that are on it. And the purpose to it is, is kind of self-explanatory. It's ways to revitalize the downtown. And so that can be a number of things related to the downtown, whether it's within public right of way, uh, open space, architecture of buildings, um.
Strategic plans?
Yeah, anything that's kind of called out within the downtown strategic plan is, that is going to be the, the jurisdiction of that, uh, that commission. And so one of the items that's will no doubt be discussed is really trying to revamp and modernize our zoning code because it is kind of antiquated and what we've done throughout the last several years, we just did it actually, is do these things on kind of piecemeal, like as they come up, we'll um make a zoning text amendment for it, which there's nothing wrong with that. That's good to do, especially when you're listening to the needs of the community. This particular one was a request. Um, but the, the goal for this is to, to do like a comprehensive overhaul of our, our zoning code in relation to the downtown. So this group is only going to focus on the downtown. They're not going to look at um the community as a whole. So what we can expect from that is uh zoning tax amendments that will be proposed, that will come out of um out of this uh commission. So no one, uh, so the, the mayor has made a point. Out of this uh, commission. So no one, uh, so the, the mayor has made a point, has uh, recommended appointments that are with the advice and. Consent of city council. Um, it is an open public meeting, so I do encourage everyone to attend that if you're able to. I can certainly send out information on that, um, because eventually it's gonna come, depending on what the, the discussion topic is. I mean, not everything that's discussed at the, that commission is gonna come to, to plan commission, but certainly anything zoning text-related. Will come uh, before the, before the plan commission, so.
And it would help them to have some background and hear their discussions as to why they want that.
Yep, so awesome.
And since we don't have a second meeting a month. We, we can go to this.
Yeah, and that was uh, what was this, one of the um, dates too, was the, the second meeting. The, the, the date of the commission has not been totally finalized yet, but um, it variable could be the fourth Monday. Of the month at six o'clock uh, in this room.
Fourth Monday?
Right, that's, that's not finalized yet, though.
But you'll let us know.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Any questions about that? You know, because we, we were so actively involved in developing the strategic plan and going to the meetings and hearing the community. Um, you know, I feel like it's kind of our baby that they at least look at it, but since we, it won an award for our city. And that we had some input in that direction, so um. I think that it'd be good if we, you know, if we can, if you can, we go, we go see what they're talking about. So we know the background and have, and have input. I'm sure the last quarter, audience participation, since it's an open meeting. Yeah, anyway. And we can talk about licensing all the, um, places in town. Alright, um, anything else? Any big things happening on the horizon as far as development?
Um, that, that's kind of it for now. Um, we've had some discussions with some developers about some multifamily. Housing here and there, nothing too large though, but um, housing is certainly a need of the community that. Was identified in the comprehensive plan. Um, next year, one of the, the tasks. That the city is looking to undertake is doing like a housing plan, is to determine where, what are we lacking in the community in terms of. Housing stock and inventory, um, where, where could we improve upon areas uh, like. We uh, doing zoning tax amendments to address certain regulations that may not be useful and may deter. Uh, about good, good uh, planning and development, so that'll be something else that'll come before the plan commission for discussion.
Um, what have happened to the Habitat for Humanity plan?
They're still moving through.
They're still moving through, okay.
And what about that townhouse, fifty-nine sixty-four, John? Uh, they were gonna be like single.
Oh, yeah, the forest preserve.
Redwood, yeah, so that the forest preserve has um, filed for condemnation.
Gotcha.
Uh, for eminent domain.
Okay.
That property.
Because of the, the oaks that are there, right? They're saving the oaks.
Wow, one of the.
And the butterfly? The butterfly? Yeah.
Okay, I don't mind it, I mean, it's like the Lorax, the, the Lorax.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't wanna destroy too much environment, you know, but it was a good idea, it was just, cause I seen them, just build a few. Uh, houses like, I think uh, Aurora, I think it was Aurora.
Aurora has a redwood development.
Yeah.
That uh, just completed, yeah.
And what about the condos that were gonna get built and, not the, I think it was also in the same area.
In Skinway? Yeah, so they're permitting right now. They actually just resubmitted a couple of weeks ago, so they've gone through one round of reviews. And the second round is just uh, wrapping up, so that is still, still moving forward.
Okay.
The uh, the bowling alley too, I know I get questions on that, um, which is next to the haunted house, or.
Yeah, it is the haunted house, yeah.
Yeah, um, they, it's still their intention to move forward, but we have not gotten plans yet.
To open a bowling alley?
Uh, to reopen, uh, yeah, to reopen the bowling alley as a more modern.
Not like a main, main event or algo, maybe.
Right, yeah, um, with like arcade and laser tag, they, more than just a bowling alley, kind of a whole uh. Experience of like an entertainment center.
Oh, that's nice. Did they have a haunted house, sure.
So the, the haunted house that won an award um, in Cornerstone Lakes, they, they are leasing space. In not the bowling alley portion of that building, but in the old.
Like Cornerstone.
Uh, so the, the individuals who uh, who operate the haunted house, they live in Cornerstone Lakes. They used to operate this haunted house out of their house, and they grew so much that they looked for. Um, from actual commercial space to do the haunted house, so they're in, what is the, it was like a, a.
Club thirty-eight?
Yeah.
Club thirty-eight.
Same thing.
But they were at the bowling alley.
Well, it's next door.
It's next door.
Kind of attached next door.
So you have the bowling alley portion and then there's like a, that separation between the bowling alley and the.
They were open, did they do the food wagon thing or the?
They did.
They did. It worked, yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty good season for it.
Yeah, I went there the other day and, man, those lines, two hour wait.
Wow.
Oh, really? Oh, that's great.
Two hour, unless you go, we went to the fast lane, it was only like a few dollars extra, but it was worth it, cause we had a babysitter that night. And we're like, we cannot, I can't, we can't, we only have two hours.
Yeah. But it was good?
It was really good.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah, my wife was really not too scared. She was like, I still have her, like, her like, she like literally scratched my arm. It was that scary, yeah.
So they've had two, two years now.
Two years there, I went, went to original, once at her house, I went over there, that's when we first started to like, get to know other business and. When I got here and, wow, then we're here, I was like, oh, cool, and then with the food trucks, it's really nice, cause. People get scared, it, it's like, it, it has really brought like life to that area of thirty-eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's long, long forgotten, but.
Yeah.
With that one and then.
Since the Jello wrestling has been long. There used to be Jello wrestling down there. I've lived here too long. Um, what happened with the Ingleton School people? Are they, are they still operating out of that old Ingleton School? Off of fifty-nine? They were having cooking schools.
Kitchen table?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, they're still operating.
Okay. And uh, what's happening with our gas station?
Thirteen oh seven South Meltmore, um, belt shell.
Yeah.
Already, um.
Well, we got two of them going, right?
So the shuttered gas, shell gas station, um, just north of Roosevelt, they actually just, uh, their permit was issued today. Um, so they're in for permitting for several months, um, but it's been issued today. They're very uh. Eager to get going on that, so I think before the weather starts to turn, they're gonna try to do as much work as they can. The quick trip up at um, right, that, fifty-nine, there's no movement on that.
Nothing, okay, alright, that's good. Any other questions that have been keeping you up at night about what we've talked about in the business?
The public meeting signage?
Yes, we'll bring that.
A lot of the old signs are still around.
Yeah.
Tilt over and weeds.
Yeah, we, it's a, that, that kind of fell off the priority, was we had some changes here. Recently, so um.
You all know about Tom leaving, right? Why don't you tell him?
Tom, uh, I think I mentioned it the last meeting, but Tom Daybriner, uh, director of community development has retired in September. So I'm serving as the interim director uh, right now, so my, I'm a little stretched thinner, or thinner than I was before.
He used to answer my emails within thirty seconds. Now I, I've been learning to wait.
It was after four thirty-one, I, I felt bad about that.
Yeah, he need, no, 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 don't ever feel bad about that. But he is wearing double hats now, just so you all know.
So if somebody wanted to, to do like a wedding venue in their ranch, like, let's say five acre, ten acre homes. Is that something they have to go through this process too with the zoning board, or it's just if it's, if it's. If it's farmland or commercial, could they do it? Or, or because it's residential, they won't be able to do it?
Well, the type of use you're describing, um, I don't know if we really have any of those in town. Or someone would, so that, that is a very popular use, the, the wedding venue out of like.
A ranch, right.
Yeah, a farm.
Right.
Um, so that's like a banquet studio, which is not permitted in any residential district. It is a commercial district, but that type of you, that. That setup is more like the, the five, ten acres, like we don't really have any.
Right.
Now, we might, but um, you know, there could be some out there, but it's, it wouldn't be permitted.
Right, it, it will be the one residential, or today we'll have to. Convert that residential to like.
Missed use.
Commercial residence, okay.
Yeah.
Cool, thank you for that info.
Are you kidding me?
No, no. I get that, no, I find out, he's looking to buy in, in the count of uh, forty acres. It already has the house, it's a pony farm, so instead of the animal business, they wanna go to the human business, so. So I talked to their city administrator, I kinda told them the joke and they're like, oh yeah, that's, that's funny, but yeah, no, I think it's, it's easier. To make it from pony business to a wedding venue, and I think that, I mean, they really don't have neighbors around there, maybe the, could have never like two mile. Maybe it's a mile and a half, two miles, so like, I don't know.
You could spot for it, though.
Yeah, I think it will work out, but we have meeting tomorrow and I'm like, let me take John's brain.
Alright, any other questions? Any other updates? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
We'll move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? We are adjourned. It's kind of lonely not to see anybody out there, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I, I miss people.